Alright, um, presentation of the street program construction.
Good morning, good evening everyone. I think everyone, uh, visited on map, you could be sent to both of those areas. Color coded to, uh, more defined areas of, um, I should say intense work that we're going to do in the coming months. Uh, if you have that, it's pretty straightforward. The yellow streets that you see marked, uh, Nashbrook area, parks and gas station, uh, Keyakook on the streets, Arrowhead. We, I believe, are all going to be virtually completely removed down to the stone. Uh, we've taken cores, you know, by how much asphalt we have out there, we'll use some quarters anyhow. And, uh, take all the asphalt out, regrade the existing stone, patches necessary, and then put the appropriate amount of asphalt back in. That will vary from street to street, uh, three and a half to five inches, just depending on what we have to take out to get to the stone that we want to, where we built the streets up. The streets you see in green, and I won't go through that whole list because it's pretty lengthy, are going to be rehabilitated by the milling, two inches of asphalt top, patching as necessary, and resurfacing with two inches of surface asphalt. In the green streets, we have extensive curb and gutter work, uh, mull apart at town. Because of that, we elaborated and sort of expanded our scope of work in there because we're taking so much curbing gutter out. That would leave a three-foot patch inside the curbing gutter. The pavement is marginal, but we decided we're going to have a new curb, patch, and then old pavement. We're just going to take it all out and do the two-inch overlay, as I just told you. Uh, we're very fortunate, in the Ashbrook area, that curbing gutter is pretty much pristine. We're probably going to use ninety-five plus percent of it, uh, after the patch, so it'll all stay in. Keyakook, we're reconstructing, that's a, called a rural cross-section, there's no curb and gutter, it's a specific drainage system, hopefully. Uh, same thing with Vine Street. Arrowhead also has curb and gutter. Unfortunately, it's got curb and gutter.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Certainly.
If you talk about Keyakook and reconstruct, does that mean a re-leveling or something?
No, no, we're going to take that right down to the stone also, and put down, I believe.
I've heard from residents that they said that it's not sloped right or something?
Right now, there is no defined ditch line on the east side of Keyakook. It, it comes and goes, I imagine over the years. People have filled in the ditch because it's easier to mow, easier to maintain. There's a lot of standing water that we see on the east side of the road. What we can do is take the existing pavement all the way down, cut a little deeper on the west side of the road, so the entire road pitches to the creek. And then we can put a crown in it and then store more water where there are going to be. That's the plan right now.
Thank you for letting me interrupt.
No, no problem, no problem. I think I was addressing, Arrowhead, uh, Arrowhead's curb and gutter is in very bad shape, and one of the reasons is there is no real drainage system out there. It's almost twelve hundred feet long, and it has a total of two drainage structures on it. Uh, if you drive Arrowhead, you'll notice, if you pull on the curb and gutter, probably for five feet out from the curb and gutter, it's pretty much rubbleized. Uh, the reason for that is the water is, number one, not getting into the gutter, and number two, the gutters are only a foot, and they're trying to carry seven hundred feet of water in the gutter. What's not happening is in the street, and that has dictated the level of deterioration of that out there. Uh, fortunately, they do have an existing storm sewer system for a little less than half the street. And what we're going to do with that is put, extend that storm sewer system to the very west end of Cul-de-sac, add structures as you come down the road towards Wolf Road, and use the existing drainage system. So it's minimal amount of work to get the water off the street. But as part of that, pretty much the south side curb and gutter is all going to go. And on the north side of the street, probably, we barked it out, probably twenty-five, thirty percent has got to come out simply because it's deteriorated, doesn't serve its function any longer. And what we're going to propose to do is take all the curb and gutter out of the street, simply because it's, it's the best way to do it.
I think you said there are two drains on that street now, what will it end up with, or the normal?
Uh, normally your spacing's around two hundred feet without doing an in-depth drainage analysis, so you're twelve hundred feet, and when I say two drains, there are two drains on Arrowhead. There's actually two at Wolf Road also. So the total of four at twelve hundred feet, but two at the end of the line. Uh, we're probably going to put in an extra six drains, two on each side as you go up the road. Two north of the existing, and then one south of the existing. Uh, as far as the rest of the town, we'll do patching as necessary. Uh, as you can see, our cost estimate, and I believe you've got one, that's at two million and three-five, something like that. Uh, that's a work in progress. Uh, we're still refining scope of work in various areas and the R S estimate cost. Uh, right now, since I handed those out, uh, we've redone it and we're down to about two million, two hundred seventy thousand dollars. So it's coming down, uh, for general information, engineers are very conservative. And, uh, to lighten the discussion, we don't want to build a job. That's the kind of terminology in the field where if our estimate is low for all the work we've done, they say, well, you just got to build a job. But we want a contractor to do it. So our conservative, our estimate is conservative in my eyes. Uh, then we can keep tweaking it down, tweaking it down. Five dollars here, two dollars there, to get it probably in the two million fifteen thousand dollar range. But I don't want to do that, because if we get too low, then there's action you folks have to take uh, because the bids went over our estimate. Say they come in at two million one, now it's a little different scenario than if we are above the low bidders. So I do believe that, uh, as we stand right now, we will have sufficient money to crack seal and seal coat the rest of the streets and town as necessary. But again, we won't know until we get the bids. Very large job, we should get good numbers.
Dave, uh, just a little by way of review as this process has unfolded, Mr. Van De Bell and two, um, his assistants from engineering firm have met a couple of times with John and myself at San. Just, you know, almost immediately after the bond issue was passed, I wanted to get this project going. And, uh, basically told him, you know, let's move on this. We, um, my recollection, and I'm just asking, you know, tell me if this was incorrect, but when we started with the All Streets Plan that we had talked to the, to the village about in connection with the bond referendum, um, that we would include all the streets in the village. There were certain streets that were going to get, more or less, for lack of a better engineering term, we'll call it major reconstruction going down to the, to the gravel. Some were going to get the milling overlay, and then there were other streets that were predominantly going to get some patching and crack sealing, correct?
Correct.
And the, um, again, as the testing was gearing up and, and final engineering being looked at, Dave and his colleagues came in and said that, you know what? We, we think we're, because it's such a big project, we probably will have money to be able to do more than what the original plan contemplated. And so we talked about that, and they made some suggestions. And what you see here, um, with the yellow and the green streets on the map, is the result of that process to say, hey, if there is money within the two and a half million dollar bond issue after the expenses are paid for, that those streets that maybe would normally have only gotten the crack sealing, let's mill an overlay. And an area that's an example of what's going on is the forty-five acres. Indian Head Trail, Arrowhead Court where the Metzes lived, down the Sioux Trail. Those areas that may have been originally earmarked for just some patching and crack sealing, that we wanted to do the best we can for the entire village. So a collective decision based on input from our engineers, we're going forward and going to try to pave, um, as much streets as possible.
Right, we should have had that, uh, but there are more streets being paved than initially put in our flyers and our evaluations that we did per se, good show service over the years.
So, and, uh, still it's within the, the money that we have approved from the bond. And so my recommendation obviously is going to be to do as much as we can with that money and to do the, I want to call it the better work, but the more extensive work with respect to some streets that may have not received that. Also, um, one thing, and I have a call in to the Acacia Homeowners Association, and Mr. Berson, I see you, you're here representing the association. I talked to Frank O'Connor, but, um, we're going to get into a couple of things that, as, as we progress here tonight, that will affect the roads in the, in the association. And I have not seen it yet, and if it was sent, I got to tell you, I had email problems with my village email here this week, and getting on and seeing things, and we'll talk about that later. But the, the, um, I won't call it the issue, but the matter that we still would like to address and, and bring out about the association's willingness is there are parking areas along the different squares where we own the street, but then there's that place where the people park. And there's curbing around there, and we're still trying to find out what's ours in terms of the curbing. But the point is, since the paving company will be there.
We discussed that already.
Okay.
We did it, we did it, people, they did the roads ten, fifteen years ago.
Okay.
So we probably will do it again.
And again, I understand it depends on how much is it going to cost, right?
Yeah.
We're going to pave it and go.
Fire it.
Well, that's good, that's, that's good to know, but that's something that we can actually.
Work is a tiny right now, but that's, it's a lot of that.
So that we, we can have a nice look to it and not have just a street part that's the village with new pavement, and then the old asphalt for the parking, and then a patch along where we put new curbing in. Just pave the whole thing, make it look nice.
We agree.
More black road, more black top, but, okay.
One question.
Yes.
Are we going to be including, like we discussed, the preventative maintenance software that Ed had requested for the streets, and you had recommended that, or you, or we had talked about the future? Uh, so I just want to make sure that we did have a discussion about that some point in time.
Are, are we going to talk about that tonight?
Well, I was saying, in, in the budget, I know you guys were talking all about the budget, the two point five million and the money. I, I also know that we talked about making sure that we have the money to do the repairs, that we have the ability to be able to run the software that we couldn't run for the last three or four years, so we can have a preventative maintenance program. So I just want to make sure that we, we have that in the back of our minds again. Because some of the reason why we're in this situation is because we couldn't run that software, the pace or, you know.
Treatment program.
Pace or software. So I just want to make, put a little bug in your ear about that, because we had talked about it.
For the, and. The norm around the finance committee?
There was money that was put.
Software for this pace of program.
In the spreadsheet about that program. I don't want to get, again, you know, it's like we put in the candy store, we have all our new roads, and then we forget that, uh, I think Mr. Hinchell brought it up, on year four or year five, you know, maybe my street or somebody other street's going to have a bad winter, and that other street has to be crack filled, and your maintenance software needs to be somewhere.
Well, that's something that'd be fine, it's, can you, can you add to it? Take that, uh, you know, and partly that's why we're, the other part is that we never have the money to go off the page and patch the streets, and, and there's a downside to catching the streets because when the people have nice gold in front of them, then suddenly their inclination to support a referendum goes away because their part of the world is, is pristine. Anyway, back with the construction. Actually, Dave, I'm going to ask you, um, is there anything else you'd have to say about the street, um, construction? I, how about a timeline? We have discussed that, you want to, uh, fill us in on the timeline, and then give us your estimate on how long it will take to complete, you know, the project, about when it may start? And I understand there's still variables here, but, um, if you could, uh, inform us of what that information is.
Our plan right now is to have the bids advertised and bids in before the next board meeting. So that we can present them to the board the next board meeting. That's the plan right now. Things got a little compressed with our agreement. I believe Rich wants a fourteen-day advertisement period, which sort of tightens up the schedule a little bit because I dot advertises every Thursday. And to get a fourteen-day calendar day advertisement period, we would actually have to open the day up to board, which means you probably wouldn't see anything until you saw me that night. Uh, I could obviously email it today after it's all the bids are calculated, et cetera. But that's not done in two minutes. If we get fifteen bidders, uh, I'll probably be like Rich was tonight, sitting there trying to get the information for you from running the door at seven-thirty. So, uh, given, but that will still work out. After that, if you award the project, uh, we have sixty days to notify the contractor, again, with, uh, across the village attorney. Uh, we hope to do that as quick as possible. Usual turnaround time with the contractor. He's got to put together his contract bond and insurance and sign the contract. It's probably going to take, and I don't want to speak for him, a week, two weeks. And then it comes back to you for execution because you've already awarded it. At that point in time, say two weeks from May, at that point in time, the project will be awarded. We will schedule a pre-construction meeting to go over all the nuances, what we want done, how we're going to do it, get a schedule from the contractor. That could be done simultaneous to the work process, but, uh, because the contractors got to put a schedule together, et cetera, it probably would be pushing a little bit to ask them for that at that point in time. So we're probably looking June first at the earliest to have the shovels in the ground, if we move fast. That's, that's pretty much the best case scenario.
Dave, are we allowed to, uh, put a time limit on, you want the work completed by a certain date?
Usually we use working days, Rich, simply because if you give them a calendar date, then weather comes into play. Uh, in calendar days, you don't get charged if you can't work. Uh, but we do include that in the contract.
So the deadline is aligned, that it will be completed within X number of working days?
Correct. It can be working days, calendar days, or completion days. And we usually work with working days. Working days because you know what they have to do, and you can work backwards on the scope of work to get a reasonable amount of working days or anything else.
During, how long do you think that, uh, it will take to complete the scope of the work identified and?
Uh.
And the frame and the.
I guess, we're probably going to give them sixty to eighty working days. We have not worked out the exact amount that is reasonable for this yet, given the quantities, because that's still a moving target with us right now.
But that's something you would have refining by the time it goes out to bid?
Oh, yeah, that would be right in the bid document, yes.
I just had a question across the board. Is there, I'm sure there's a great reason why you would extend it to a, a two-week period for this, just to get more money? I mean, don't the big guys know what's coming anyway? So.
Everybody who's going to get it's going to have it for.
Right, so is there, was there a logic behind that?
Well, if you have it too short, you have some bidders who were planning to be, having enough time to prepare the bid, but.
I was just wondering if.
And it's just, just trying to pick a reasonable time.
Okay.
On that same note, hearing that you may be getting the bid the day of the meeting and then.
Oh, we will, with that timeframe, that's what it will be.
We want to move the meeting a week.
Sure.
Uh, that way it gives you more time to review, assess, compile, we give more time to review. I'm just throwing it out as a suggestion. I don't know if that means then everything gets pushed a week.
It does.
People are interested in getting this.
It does, it means you're, you're just losing a week.
Yeah. So I, I don't want to hold things up, but I'm just throwing it out.
Well, we had, uh, talked about if you use the two weeks scenario, the target date still is the publishing the I dot bulletin on April twenty-fourth, I think it was.
It's two weeks before the bid being, I think that's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Twenty-fourth, yes.
And we, you know, we had, tend to, we talked about getting the bids open on Tuesday before the board meeting, the sixth.
Correct.
And so it's recommendation is to go to fourteen days. I mean, I, I based that only on it being a reasonable period of time, nothing etched in stone that you have to go fourteen days.
Well, if we did, not the kind of, chapter deck, but if we signed the agreement, we're agreed to do it in fourteen days.
Right, I understand, I understand. Well, if we, if that can be modified.
Might help then, the process, right, you're saying?
Yeah, well, right now, they're going to get qualities.
I want to stay with the, uh, in other words, open the bid on, um, Tuesday, May sixth.
They even, you want to open it Tuesday, or Wednesday, the day before, a little more breathing room.
Dave, what would be your recommendation?
Uh, I've seen jabs as big going the I dot bulletin with the same. I dot requires ten days from first day advertisement to opening the bids. In other words, you can open it Monday, in this case, the, uh, well, just memorize the fifth. And I dot's good one. Big jab, little jab, if they want to, they're going to come after it.
Right, we're going to know.
This one they're going to do after.
Ten or twelve days seems reasonable, I mean.
Oh, we can do it Wednesday, we just pick two days.
About it and figure, focus on Tuesday.
Tuesday sounds good to me, it'll be just a couple of days.
We'll all get to look at it.
You know something, we could get scanned and send it out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have it on Wednesday. Actually, you can have it like Tuesday, probably.
So it'll be sometime Tuesday afternoon, uh, to give them the benefit of the whole day on Tuesday or most of the day?
We could go into the afternoon, we can do it anytime during the day. Right now, it's your choice. There, there's no rules as far as what time of day you have to open bids. Normally, it's after ten o'clock to start with, because FedEx can deliver by ten o'clock. And some people FedEx stuff in, so they make it ten o'clock, we made this at eleven, so. It's pretty much up to you. We can do it at two in the afternoon, we can do it at three in the afternoon. And I don't need to know that right now. I, I need to know it in about a week.
But we'll still go with that date, Tuesday, the May sixth, yeah, for opening. And then you'll be in a position to award the contract on, maybe.
Right, you'll be able to take board action, uh, and, you know, awarding it. You don't have to get them a notice to proceed or anything right away. But sooner they get the contract documents, they execute the contracts before you do. So we, we put the books together, we send the contractors, say it's been awarded to you on such and such a date. We fill it out and get it back to us for the insurance and such and such.
Rich, I have one, uh.
Okay.
Uh, I know you didn't want to put a calendar date on it, but sixty to eighty business days is roughly four months.
Working days, huh?
Uh, working days, sixty day working, roughly four months, so somewhere October, in the fall.
We should be done, I would, we'd be done by the end of September.
Is that good enough? I know that's a question everybody wants to start and, right?
No, I think with the timeframe we've set up right now, the scope of work we have in the project, and, and we've got flexibility in the working days we give them too. Like I said, we haven't gotten down to it. There's not a lot of brain surgery here in this project, except for over on Arrowhead, where we've got the storm sewer going in. Quite frankly, if a company, a big company, K five, and they won't do it, but if they wanted to do it, they could be in and out of here in a month. They'd do the whole thing in a month and say goodbye. But that's not the way they work. They like to schedule everything all over the place. Keep, it'll stay moving, but you won't see fifty trucks flying through town one day at a time.
Thank you.
Dave, let me ask you, and if you need to rest yourself, uh, I would like to skip to item number four on the agenda, and we'll come back to the, the agreement, but. We discussed it, it, well, it was suggested by our, um, public work superintendent at San during our, you know, really preliminary discussions with the engineers regarding, um, doing a water main replacement for, I believe it was nine hundred feet, Ed?
Yes.
Nine hundred feet of water main replacement along Cascade, just across from Black Hawk Park there, right? Roughly where it is?
Yes.
And, um, and again, the, uh, you know, the equities on it, and, and it is, and behind it is that Cascade is going to have, not total reconstructions, but it's going to, it's going to have some, you know, more than crack sealing going on. While the road is dug up, that would be the time to replace the water main. And why Cascade, um, is because Cascade is one of the, uh, not at the top, but near the top of the list of water mains that we have, have, have had the most water main breaks. And Ed's point, and a very good point is that why repave that street with the old water main there, and then maybe a month later have a water main break and have heavy equipment we need to, to, to go out of house to fix it, come in driving across our newly paved street to fix the water main. While it's dug up, let's just do it right now. And we do have money in our water and sewer fund that we can tackle that project. And this is a, again, I'm going to, I, I'm, I'm going to, I'm advocating for this. I'm going to advocate for it as part of the street plan, but it's, you have to keep in your mind, it's two separate things. The street project itself is, the money is coming from the street grant, street, street referendum. The Cascade water main replacement will come from our water and sewer fund. And, um, we, we had talked about it, and Ed had gotten us an estimate from Uno Construction, right?
That's right.
Uno is the company who was the low bidder for the Cochise water main replacement that we did a year ago. And, um, my understanding is we're happy with the work they did. They did it in a reasonable time period and in good fashion, and had it done. So, um, I think it was, what, about a hundred seventy thousand was the estimate?
Yes, it was, yes.
And we discussed about squeezing that estimate and see if we can. And we discussed about squeezing that estimate and see if we could get this job done for a hundred fifty thousand. And I'm putting this out for discussion, and there's a couple of, there's a couple of catches to it that I wanna make clear, but this is why we're here, as a board to discuss these.